The County Commission, if you stand for the pledge, please. Just a reminder to silence your cellphones this morning. Meeting documents are available next to Commissioner Bender. And if you have a need for a listening device, Carol can help you with that. Before we get started, we have a special guest, and I don't want to embarrass him, but I will anyhow. Mr. Ospos, do you want to introduce your great-grandson or grandson? He is an Eagle Scout candidate, and he's here this morning to observe. So congratulations, and thank you for coming.
Yay.
Yep. I was going to say that, but you did it better than I, so thank you. Again, we'll start with the routine business. First action is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the minutes from June 6th.
Motion to approve the County Commission meeting minutes.
Thank you. Is there any changes, corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Excuse me. Item B is a special meeting to present the USD facility evaluation report. Have a motion.
Make a motion to approve those special meeting minutes.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second to approve the USD report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item three are bills to be paid $4,056,857.48.
Pay the bills.
Second.
What you didn't know, as an Eagle Scout, that's your responsibility to fix.
Thought you were going to make him pay the bills.
Fix it, we'll find a way to pay it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barth.
Just a comment on the bills today. They include $122,000 from the Highway Department to concrete materials, $3.245 million on motor vehicle fees that we're rebating to the state. And I think I counted outside attorneys, 13 outside attorneys getting more than $1,000 in the budget, and also a bill representing Mr. Burgett for $10,000. Anyway, he continues to cost Minnehaha County.
Any other comments about the bills? We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. We have the reports on file. Minnehaha County Sheriff's report for May. The auditor's account with the county treasurers for May. And the county juvenile detention center report for May. Item five, personnel actions. Carrie Dever, consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Does anyone have any questions? Carrie, any comments? Nope. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item six, Olivia, applications for abatement. And there's quite a few.
Yes. We have applications for abatement A through N. They are for the veteran exemption 2016 property taxes. So RDID 26036 in the amount of $889.50. RDID 80250 in the amount of $1,521.30. RDID 76074 in the amount of $1,521.30. RDID 52729 in the amount of $1,472.27. RDID 36954 in the amount of $1,521.31. RDID 69693 in the amount of $889.51. RDID 59116 in the amount of $1,101.48. And RDID 62497 in the amount of $336.68. Then we have RDID 39338 in the amount of $369.87. RDID 36286 in the amount of $764.81. RDID 52370 in the amount of $1,288.54. RDID 31129 in the amount of $1,271.92. RDID 69123 in the amount of $1,512.31. And RDID 78232 in the amount of $1,512.31.
Any questions?
Just a comment. Item number B is RDI number 76040. Just was read incorrectly, and I just wanted to catch it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask an equalization question on this.
Certainly.
Diane, my question is, are these annual things that veterans need to do? Or once they're established, do they carry on every year?
Diane Reck, my equalization office. These were approved at the County Board of Equalization for the $100,000 exemption. They only have to apply once unless they move. Or if they become deceased, then their spouse has to apply for it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Diane?
Make a motion to approve all of them.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the veterans exemption from A through N. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item seven is a notice from the Satskota Department of Health, disinternment permit issued for the remains of Jeffrey Willer, Hills of Rest Cemetery. Can we take these as one notice? Or do we need to do it individually?
It's just collectively.
Collectively is fine. Item B is a notice from the Satskota Department of Health for the disinternment permit issued for the remains of Dolores Anderson, St. Paul Cemetery in Garrettson. And item C is to authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders to request proposals for Minnehaha County juvenile detention facility boiler replacement. A and B can be separate?
Well, A and B can just be a notice. C will need commission action authorized.
Gotcha. Thank you. Doesn't seem right to keep them together.
Make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish notice, bids and proposals for the boiler.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Item eight, there are no planning and zoning notices. Number nine is a petition for compromise of lien DPNO 60057 for $1,825.60.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Mueller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. You have before you a application for compromise of lien for $1,825.60. The petitioner is attempting to refinance her home to purchase a commercial property contingent on resolution of this lien. She has submitted an application for a compromise and release of lien, DPNO 60057, and has selected the request option on the form to remove petitioner from the joint lien with no payment, leaving the remainder of the lien only in the name of her spouse and to compromise and release the lien as it applies to the real property because she is the sole owner and holder of the mortgage on the property. She explains in her narrative that the DPNO represents public defender services provided in 2009 and 2012 to her husband in the amount of $1,555,000 prior to their marriage in January 2015, and that the lien recorded in 2017 in the amount of $775.60 was incurred by him. Minnehaha County Public Defender time expenditure records for the three liens totaling $1,825.60 have been verified and support the claim. The applicant has filed for divorce, but does not intend to finalize the divorce at this time and has filed her 2016 income tax return as married filing jointly. You'll also find attached the total income and the financial statement for her. For your review, we have included the application and narrative, lien summary, 2016 tax return, marriage certificate and deed to the property. The applicant is here today, and we would turn it over to the Commissioners for discussion.
Thank you, Carol. Any comments, Kirsten?
Just a quick note, just to clarify on that. I think the premarital debt issue here is $1,050. I think that was just a typo on the briefing memo, so I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, it didn't add up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions for Carol?
Not yet.
Not yet. As always, when we address these compromises for lien, if the applicant is here, you do not need to identify yourself. You do not need to stand and come to the podium. You can stay seated where you're at and make any comments that you feel comfortable with making. So if you would like to do that, that would be great. Go ahead.
I would just like to say that the, with reference to these, the $775.60 incurred in 2016, after we were married, it was as a result of a domestic violence incident. And so I've called the police to get them out of the house after being brandished with weapons. And they've been committed to that and is in prison right now. So that's the main reason why I'm just cooperating with you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, not for the applicant, but for the State's Attorney's Office. You know, considering the financial status, why was this person given a county-paid-for attorney? And that's one thing I don't think we had in the packet. It was the application for public defender services. I don't know if you'd want to look at that before passing on this. But just as a brief comment, I'm guessing that when the assets were listed on that form, I'm guessing what you'll find is there was no claim to any of the marital assets on that form because of, I think in this case, the home is titled only in the applicant's name, not the debtor's spouse's. So based on that, recounting on that sheet, it may have appeared to the judicial officer that he qualified for public defender services. So. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Carol, any other information? Is there a motion?
I think I have one more question.
Certainly.
Does a prenuptial agreement have anything to do with the charges after?
Yeah. Generally, a prenuptial agreement doesn't necessarily affect the statute on poor relief liens. There is a statute generally about support of general necessities for another spouse, but there's also a statute that says a separate property of another spouse remains the character of a separate property of the other spouse even during, or for debts before and after the marriage. There was that briefing that was sent out outlining that out. So a prenuptial agreement doesn't necessarily change the statutes and the obligations that are established by statute. It only provides a resolution of the contractual dispute between the spouses once they agree to separate or get divorced, so.
Commissioner Kersky, any question?
No, no, just thinking. Just thinking. It's obvious, so, yeah.
Sorry. These are very difficult decisions for us. At the same time, I do have some questions as to why we seem to continue to give assistance to people that do have the financial resources of their own to provide for an attorney. And so I'm going to make a motion to deny this request.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion not, is denied for the lack of a second? Is there another motion?
I would take it, I guess, a little bit different direction. I don't think she's responsible for the 15, or the $1,050 because that was prior to their marriage. The $775.60, I totally get where you're coming from, and I agree with you. But I also agree with Jeff that, you know, he shouldn't have had a public defender in the first place, and I believe that's something he owes you back to your estate. But I don't feel like we as Commissioners should be in the middle of that. He does owe you that money, but that's not something that I think that I should take off on his bill, just because it's messy.
We're not asking for it to be eradicated. He fully acknowledges that he actually sent me a statement that due to this delay of the mail getting out of that facility, it wasn't here yet. He's acknowledging it, and he's willing to pay the debt in full.
Okay.
It's just that it's his, not mine. And he's never shared anything, and that's the, I'm not asking for that bill to be eliminated in any way. It's, he's acknowledging that it's his, and he intends to pay it. It's, I'm just asking for it to be removed, like, my. He acknowledges that he's been, he's, he's never, he's never shared. He's never shared anything like that. And, you know, what's his is his, and what's mine is mine. I'm married, I'm very, very.
Olivia, you did a very good job of noticing something that the rest of us hadn't. And Kirsten, do you want to address that?
Sure, yeah. Basically, the note was that the debtor spouse, the one that's incarcerated, is the only name appearing on the actual lien itself. There's no spouse indicated. I think the issue here is, and why the request is coming your way, is when the title company or whoever is reviewing the refinancing, and I think that was the trigger for this coming across, they make the assumption that something leaned in a spouse's name applies to the other spouse. So just for your information, it's not in our records that way. It's just that during that review process, the assumption is made that it applies to the spouse as well, so.
So the title company made that assumption, I'm assuming?
And that's very common, and.
So you're saying, if I may, so you're saying that the county does not have a lien against the two of them, it's just against, yeah?
Operation of law, we do, but actually in our records, we don't. I mean, the law, the law says that a lien applies to both spouses, but it's not noted that way in our, there's, her name is not on the lien paperwork here itself in our files.
Commissioner Kersky?
I'm mostly inclined to go the way of Commissioner Heiburger. Definitely the $1,050. And the $775 or whatever that dollar amount that is owed is, the question then becomes, who does, who becomes the person holding that note? Is it her, or is it us? And in this case, based on what we just discussed, I think it's us. And I'm going to make a motion to approve the DPNO, or what's the word, right way to say it?
Depends what you want to do. Tell me what you want to do, and I can give you the magic words.
I want to put the entire lien back on here. Take, remove her name from the entire lien.
So that would be a motion to compromise the lien in full against the applicant, only leaving it in the property in person of the debtor spouse?
That's what I want to do.
That's exactly what Dean would have said.
Yep.
Second. And that's what Jeff said, second.
We have a motion and a second, and I'll assume that you have that in the record. Okay. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes three to one. Does she need to go to the auditor's office?
Melinda will help her wrap that up.
The Commission Office right outside the door will be able to help you with that. Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
I knew you were going to make me work on my last.
We aren't done yet.
Think before you retire. Retire.
Thank you. Now we're to opportunities for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who has comments that they'd like to make about something that is not on the agenda, we'd love to hear from you. You need to come to the microphone, identify yourself, and we also need your address, please.
Okay. My name's Jeff, Jeff Thompson. I live at 46742 Lyons Street, Colton. And this is in regards to the new changes that were made into the tile drainage rules about downstream permission. This last week, on Thursday, June 8th, I had heard some equipment working north of my farm. I live in Lyons Township, Section 8. I looked out and saw a roll of drain tile through the trees. I went out, and Hefty Farms were in the process of finishing up a drain tile that would drain onto my neighbor Terry Bundy's land, and then onto my farm. Went out and talked to the farm manager, Mike, and he said that Brian Hefty had talked to all of us, and I told him that nobody has contacted me. I then contacted Eunice McGee, who was another neighbor, and they were doing the same thing in another part of the farm and draining onto her property, and she said nobody had contacted them also. By talking to neighbors, I found out that the rules had changed recently, as the 1st of June. I hadn't known nothing about the whole process. You know, you're busy planting, and you don't catch everything. And a lot of the neighbors I talked to did not know of this change also. I recognized the changing in the rules. I talked to Cindy about it, and, you know, I thought it was kind of a statewide-type thing. A lot of counties had this rule, but it sounds like Minnehaha County was one of the few. But I just wanted to bring this up to your attention. It's a sad situation when somebody in the position of Brian Hefty has total disregard of his fellow neighbors and farmers and refuses, you know, made no attempt to contact us. And before landowners and farmers, you know, were basically forced, and we would work through things like this to get a project completed. This, you know, he's dumping onto the neighbor's property. It goes through a little channel, and then it's onto mine. I have no waterways. It goes out into a full quarter of land. I irrigate the piece of ground even, and it makes kind of a spongy mess in that spot until it disappears into the sand. But a lot of it, you know, damage that he afflicts onto me probably is small, but it's the, you know, the process and, you know, the disregard and not even talking to him. And, you know, it's like, okay, whatever else he's, they've been doing. I know they've been doing a lot of work. I don't know if any of you have been by the Baltic Corner area. There's been a lot of work in that area. Some of it is responsible. You know, the Heftys have been tearing out a lot of trees. And, you know, then there's other landowner in Northside. You know, then we wonder why we get all these regulations, and you see sometimes what happens. You know, I understand tile drainage, what it can do and help. We have done some drainage in our past, and we had to talk to our downstream people, and we got permission, and we did the project. So I guess if you have any questions, I can answer questions.
Do you have any questions for Jeff? Jeff?
Well, it's great to see you. I've been to your place previously.
Yes, a couple of you have been there, you know? And that's what we're all about, is communication and good stewardship.
I would say that I was not entirely supportive of our change in ordinance. And I remember when we had some task force meetings on drainage, someone commented that their neighbor only tiled on Christmas Day or in the fog. And it, you know, it is a step backwards when we aren't communicating properly. The, and oftentimes, even when we had disputed drainage situations, farmers would come in, and basically they'd sent notification, but they had never talked. And getting people just to talk, and farmers sometimes are reluctant to talk, I think has solved so many problems. And I, it would be better if we did more communication between property owners and especially in agricultural situations. And I guess we do have our planning director here, if he might have a comment. Mr. Chair.
Is there any other questions first? When did that change go into effect?
End of May. What was the specific date? May 30th? Yeah. And if you may, if I may have a point of.
Absolutely.
I mean, if you recall, there was a substitute one, or a substitute ordinance brought forth that would have provided for at least notification recording. That still is an option if the Commission wishes to do that, but I'll just point that out, so.
Mr. Kersky?
And if I remember correctly, that substitute ordinance was just basically to be filed here, not to be sent to the neighbors, correct?
No, there was a notification requirement in there too for certain downstream owners, so.
Okay. Trying to remember the details. It's been so long ago.
I think part of our concern was, is that how did planning and zoning enforce if we were going to do downstream notification? Because then it puts it in the middle of it. But, I mean, I've thought a lot about it since Jeff was here, and obviously I think we need to see how things play out. But if it gets to be an issue where people don't want to talk to each other, maybe we say, you know, there's a hefty fine if you don't, sorry. There's a big fine if you don't, if you don't notify your downstream landowner. But then it would be up to the farmer to report it, not for planning and zoning to run around and find them. But I don't think that's yet. I think we need to, we had really hoped that farmers would be more responsible and talk to each other, because if we repealed the whole drainage ordinance, it was giving the responsibility back to the people themselves, and we shouldn't have to run out there and babysit. So we'll see where it goes. Thank you, Jeff, for bringing it forward.
I just wanted to bring this to your attention. It's a sad one. He's on this little TV program promoting this, and plays a different game in real life, so.
I understand where you're coming from, and certainly understand the whole communication issue. Just with my own experience, I have a brother-in-law that had a tiling permit a couple of years ago, and to be blunt, he didn't know who his neighbor was. His neighbor was a landowner in San Diego.
And that is the case, you know, sadly more often nowadays. But I do have a, me and the neighbor McGee's have a meeting set up with Hefty, Brian Hefty tomorrow, so it should be interesting, so.
Keep us informed, please.
Jeff can call me.
Scott, do you have any comments or not? Okay. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other public comments about any other items that is not on the agenda? With that, we'll go to item number 10 is to authorize the Sheriff's Office to submit an application for the 2017 COPS hiring grant. Captain Mike Walsh.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mike Walsh from the Sheriff's Office. I'm here, I believe you've received a memo regarding a request for us to request three deputy sheriffs from the COPS grant, the 2017 COPS grant. And this isn't, this isn't a request to actually hire or do anything like that. This is simply a request to put forth the application to the COPS program. We intend to request three, if authorized. And as noted in the memo, we would be, we'd be required to match part of, part of the funding, 25% per deputy. I would note that just because we apply doesn't mean we'll actually be awarded any. In the past 15 years, we've applied a number of times and have very rarely gotten anyone. And additionally, requesting three doesn't mean we'll be awarded three either. We could be awarded zero, one, two, or three. And in the event we are awarded any, we would come back to the Commission and request authorization to go through with that. And at that point, if there are questions regarding that or concerns, we don't have to accept one, two, or three. We don't have to accept any. I would encourage, I would encourage acceptance of any that came along, though just simply based on the, based on the numbers that we're presenting regarding population increase, calls for service increase, actual crime rate increase, and all that.
Thank you, Captain Walsh. Anybody have any questions?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
When would we know if we approved this? When would we know whether we would get one or more, none, or?
Right. Each, I think the application closes end of July, beginning of August timeframe, and it usually takes several months. I don't have an exact month of when we would know that.
If I may have a couple more.
Certainly.
And if we had a sheriff deputy in the budget for 2018, and we were approved this, would that mean we'd still have to hire the sheriff deputy, and we couldn't use one of these ones that would be grant paid for that going forward? Because I know we've run into that before.
Yeah, I believe the supplanting rules are in place for this.
Okay. And then my final concern is maybe. Okay. Um, and then my final concern is maybe not quite so much for you, we got Mike, yeah. Is it is for the full commission and I, and maybe the public is, is just, I agree, you probably need them. But we also have to watch the budget and after these people are in place, if we get them, after three years, we have to pay for them. And that is my biggest concern, but not saying we might not go forward with it. Sorry. Sheriff, did you have something to comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
Who are you? We need your name and address.
Uh, just to clarify, supplanting, uh, that's obviously something that we'd be sensitive to. But I think that the, uh, first of all, you've not approved any. We've submitted a request for one. The final approval is until the end of September, I think, of your budget. If we learn before then, uh, you know, or at least had some communication indicate, then, then I, I believe that that would be appropriate to move forward with a grant. Now, ju- just real quickly on the, you have to, you know, it's a three-year grant. And you have to agree to retain them for that one year afterwards. Let's just say we get one or two. I can guarantee you that we're going to need one or two deputies for the next four years. This would allow us to get those paid for, you know, 75% by the feds, so. Uh, but that's an every-year thing and I understand that, um, but it, it, none of these are positions that we don't feel that we need. We didn't, you know, just say, well, let's just, you know, get the three that we could get. But we've applied. It's been very frustrating, you know, we applied, the city applied, the city got nine, we got none. You know, and they found that year that there was kind of a disproportionate award to local police departments and not to sheriff's offices. National sheriffs, uh, brought that issue. I think NACO brought that issue as well. And, uh, so they're trying to balance it better. They base it on crime rate as well. We've got an increase in violent crimes, so we might have a better chance, but that's an unfortunate way to have a better chance to get a grant. You'd think if you had a lower crime rate, then you'd have a better chance of getting them, but it's if you've got an increase in violent crime, which we do. So, again, like Captain Walsh said, we're just, it's just asking to apply. We'll see what, what we could get if you authorize this application. And then we'll probably have to come back to you and say, here's what they're saying they would give us if, if it's any. And then what do you want to do? Do you want to accept the grant? Because after four years, we have to, we have to pay our own money for.
One more question, then I will be quiet because everybody's waiting. Would this, any of this money include a car? A, a vehicle? Would any of this money include a vehicle? No, it's just the sheriff or, okay, the deputy, excuse me.
Yeah, it was one person. We're not going to buy a car for one person.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Did you have something? Yeah. I would just like to comment that I had an opportunity to visit with the sheriff about this yesterday. I had some of the same concerns that Commissioner Heiburger is expressing. And, you know, at the end of the conversation and after giving it a little more thought. I think that because we have so much flexibility here, all we're doing is authorizing the application. Once we find out if, if by some miracle, we actually get awarded something, we'll, we'll have to come back here. And at that point, we'll be further along in our budgeting process, hopefully. Um, and, and we'll have an opportunity to reevaluate. So I, I would be in favor of and support this, um, this phase, just the application. Because we do have flexibility down the road to, to consider the budget implications.
Commissioner Karski?
I'm going to agree with that. And even one step further, I, I'm of the inclination of the sheriff that within three years. At least one deputy will be absolutely necessary. So I, I, if we get it, and I hope we do, to have 75% of it paid for over three years would be a good deal for the county and the taxpayers of this county. So I'd be in support of it.
It's, it's been a good deal for us. We actually, the first year I was sheriff in 1997, we got our first COPS grant award that I was aware of. It started our school resource officer program, which you, over the years, the commission has expanded to include all of our, uh, school districts in the county. And so it, it has given us those, the ability to start and move forward. And in reality, I mean, the numbers would show you, if you wanted to show you the national statistics, we're understaffed. And this would help us get to the staffing level that I'm more comfortable with. When, when on, you know, on a Friday night, we have five cars out in the whole county doing contract time and warrants. And protection orders and special attention to people who have had stalkers at their house. I mean, they're, they're spread pretty thin, but this would really help us a little bit try to get that up. Remember, if we get three people, which I don't expect we will, if we got three people, that does not even cover one person 24 hours a day. Takes five and a half to do that, so. And you're, you're well aware of that. We've unfortunately had to deal with that with the jail.
Any other comments?
Make a motion to approve.
By the way, a happy anniversary for 20 years of service. If you started in 97, I think my math is still okay, so. Any, we have a motion and a second to approve the application. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Item 11 is, uh, county commissioner liaison reports. Any liaison reports? Uh, any new business? Commissioner Heiburger?
I have some new business. I think I'm not the only one. I just wanted to bring back up again, um, the railing for the grandstand at the fair. We talked about it in the, um, building meeting a couple of weeks ago. And I have Mark here, hopefully has numbers for us on those railings. Um, it is important and we're already concerned that we might not be able to get the railing up by the fair. Maybe Mark has some more information on it. And I would like to see us, um, move some money that's in the fair budget, so we could get those railings up on the grandstand.
Good morning, Commissioner Mark Grins, Facilities Department. Um, we have a couple of different quotes for, uh, the railings that Scott had received. Um, I've contacted Pheasant Land. I haven't heard back from them. Um, they came and looked at the bunks for the G-bach expansion. And it's kind of the drift I got from him was probably this fall is when they could get to it. So, um, we have, I got one from Arc Fabrications for just under 20,000. Um, then. I had another one from Sunderman Manufacturing and that was for almost 11,000, but there was no installation cost on that. So I would say with talking to those two, we're looking at 20 to 25,000 to get the new railings installed. If we hire outside of Pheasant Land, I don't know what their quote would be.
I think the concern is that we've been told that they needed, and Mark's recommendation was that we change them. But it was also been told that we need that railing up before the fair.
Yeah.
And we have the money. We just need authorization from the commission to be able to use the money.
Is there a guarantee in those quotes of getting it done before the fair?
They, Scott, uh, acquired the quotes and just forwarded them to me, so I haven't got a chance to talk to these contractors yet. But, uh, I don't think it's an overly large project, so. I, I mean, it's a big project, but I don't think it's a real time consumer. So I can dump, for surely check and I can let you guys know.
Mr. Chairman, I, I guess I would make a motion to, uh, make that expenditure contingent upon the, the time constraints. We hope to have by the fair.
Any other questions? Kirsten, I knew you would just finish with a flash today, so go ahead.
Um, would, would it be too disabling to notice this for next week's meeting? I guess we're, we're taking action on something that wasn't noticed for the public meeting, so.
That was my concern as well.
Yeah.
Withdraw my motion and, uh, suggest this be on our agenda for next week. And maybe by then we can make a determination on the time, uh, whether they can complete it by the time we need it done.
Do you have a question, Mr. Karski? Uh, we have a contingency fund that we have not used. Um, do we need a motion or a publication for that if it's?
I don't know the amount of the project. I don't know.
Much less than this.
What is it?
Twenty, 11 to 20 is the number I've heard so far.
Okay. Around 20,000, I would say.
Okay.
It sounds like there's still quite a bit of work to do to get this all nailed down. And so it doesn't seem to me that if we put it off for one week, we're going to have a much better idea of what exactly we're talking about. Mark can certainly work this next week to button up the proposals and get a, a firm number and a firm idea of installation. So I don't think that just by putting it off for one week, we're really derailing the process.
And just as a reminder, there's $150,000 in the building fund for grandstand.
Yeah, I was trying to find that, but, um.
And I, I did talk to Carol about where I should bring it forward because that was my concern. But, um, this is what we decided to come up with and I apologize if it should have just been next week for agenda. Now you at least know about it again and that Mark can get the numbers to us. And hopefully we can have an idea of when they could complete it.
Any other comments, Mark?
Nope.
Otherwise we'll see you here next week, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you, sir. Any other new business? Any old business? DJ?
Good morning, commissioners. DJ Booth, the highway superintendent. Uh, last week you had deferred an item for, uh, requesting an approval or executing a contract for pavement management services with IMS. The Infrastructure Management Services LLC Group. And so, uh, over the last week, we had the attorneys review the contract that we had submitted and had that approved. And I didn't present on this item last week. I just asked for the deferral. And so I'll give a, a really quick summary of what this, uh, uh, contract is. As you know, uh, Minnehaha County Highway Department, we administer a pavement management system. This asset management system is used to inventory the condition of our bituminous pavement or asphalt pavement. And also makes recommendations and decisions relating to our capital investments, uh, for our, for asphalt payments. Ultimately, it extends the life and it reduces the lifetime cycle costs of our pavement. Uh, this agreement, it's a three-year agreement in which IMS will complete a, a payment condition survey in 2017. And then, uh, they'll prepare a report, uh, complete with our inv- investment recommendations for our payments over the next five years. And then in years two and three, IMS will, uh, update that management system with any, uh, pavement management that we've done. Uh, for example, when we do an overlay or a chip seal, they'll update the information in, in our pavement management software for us. The, uh, uh, the agreement also includes hosting a website that has all of our payment condition data. All of our payment pictures and everything that we have as part of this agreement. Uh, they host that externally, uh, so we can view that at any time. It can be, become public at any time. Or part of it can be, come public if we want to share a portion of the information. Uh, there's a neat map that has, uh, our road network with different colors of shading for different conditions of payment that, that we could make public if we wanted to. Uh, and again, they host all of that as part of this agreement. Also, they'll, uh, be making a presentation to the county commission, uh, when they complete their final report after the pavement condition survey in 2017. Just giving update, an update on, uh, where we're at today, where we've come over the last three years since our last pavement condition survey. And so, uh, the agreement is in total 102,500 dollars. Uh, we partner with, with, uh, the MPO and, and CCOG on this. And, uh, we use planning funds through the SDDOT as part of that partnership. And so we pay, uh, 48% of that or 49,200 dollars. So I asked for approval of the commissioners', uh, or the chairman's signature on that agreement today.
Questions for DJ?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Uh, second, uh, Kirsten, have you had time to go through that contract?
Yes, I did. And, and this was just the deferral from last week and appropriately brought up under old business. Legal has reviewed it and we have no concerns.
Perfect. We have a motion and a second to approve the deferral from last week. I don't have the exact wordage. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, one other thing under old business, if anyone, okay.
Um, equalization mentioned to me at the beginning of the meeting that they had traveled to Pierre because of an appeal that had been taken to Pierre. And that person did not show up. We sent two of our staff members plus an attorney up there, so we have not only staff time, but you know, we've got attorney charges. And we have all that time that we wasted. There's nothing in the statute that says that we should be reimbursed for those costs. And I think it might be a good thing in our group that, um, Jean and I are on, um, that that's something that's brought forward to the legislature. That if someone appeals this to the state and we send staff up there, that we should be notified. And it's not a state issue. It's the person who didn't follow through and show up. That costs a lot of people money and I think that there should be some type of a charge. And whether it has to come back on their property taxes, I don't know, but this is not right. We wasted a whole day and a lot of other things, so. Kind of an FYI.
Commissioner Barth?
I just have to agree with Commissioner Heiburger. There's so much wisdom being exuded by my fellow commissioners today. Is that there are a lot of, uh, small issues that are small to anyone else, but they are cumulative. They, they cost our county a lot of dough. And so as we tick off these issues, uh, on a weekly basis, we should make note and, and consider bringing them to our legislators from Minnehaha County. To bring to Pierre and to, uh, make some, you know, perhaps somebody could post a bond pays, based on their plan to appeal. Uh, refundable upon their showing up, et cetera. But there, every week it seems like there's a small issue that correction would be helpful. And, uh, I would urge us to keep note.
If I may on that, having gone to those over the years too, usually I was the attorney going to that. And I would say that this isn't just a this year issue. I would say a 50% show rate at those appeals is a good year. And usually we have quite a few more than just one appeal, so this is a recurring problem. I agree.
And I'm sure it's not just us, so.
I'm sure it isn't, yeah.
Chair, what was the amount of the appeal?
I don't even know. Um, we'd have to ask, Diane's not here anymore. I'd have to ask Diane. But it wasn't very much because we talked about it a couple of weeks ago and, and I said, why is he even going? I think, and I could be wrong, but I think it was like $20,000. It was not a big deal. It was an evaluation on some property, bare ground.
It was bare ground, yeah. That was the thing. It wasn't even a home. I believe it was a vacant lot.
This time, when you think of the attorney costs, the travel time, I mean, this costs the county $2,000 or more.
That'd be conservative, I bet.
That'd be conservative.
Yeah. Wow. How sad.
Uh, any other old business? Commissioner Bender?
I just, I just would give just an update that, um, for the rest of the commissioners, that the, um, the group working on the jail. We had, um, interviews starting at 7:00 AM this morning for the construction manager at risk. We had great responses to our proposal and, and we'll be completing interviews this afternoon. Um, and so hope to get somebody on board here in the next couple of weeks.
Any other? I just have one short one and I got a text, uh, sometime this weekend. Um, there's going to be an ambulance review to, tonight at four o'clock with the city of Sioux Falls informational. And we were invited to attend that. If, in fact, you didn't get that in, invite, uh, you're certainly welcome to do that. I have a conflict. I can't, uh, attend, but if anyone else would like to go, that's fine. I'm sure Commissioner Barth, you're on that group, so, um, that's a good thing. Uh, last but not least, today's a, I would say a sad day, but a good day maybe for you.
It's both, all at once, yeah.
Uh, is, uh, Dunn as a state's attorney, the 16th, is that correct?
Yep, Friday.
Friday. And unfortunately, he's taking with him all of his responsibilities, so we're out of luck.
No, you'll be in good shape.
We're in great shape, but, but your wisdom and advice has been awesome. Um, even with my sarcastic responses to some of your questions or whatever. I enjoy the banter and you are a class act to put up with that. Uh, we are very appreciative of the fact that you have helped all of us at some point or another. I'm sure you get more phone calls from us than most anybody else in the commission. So, um, thank you for your service. We wish you well. You've been awesome. And we have a small gift of recognition and, uh, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Oh, okay. All right. Well, I just, you know, I, I'd just like to say, this last meeting of mine, you know. I've had a lot of different jobs, multiple careers. Uh, legal's been the last one that I've had. But one of the things I really appreciate with a position is a chance to learn and grow and really provide s- service. And I can tell you that both in workload and subject matter, this has been the most challenging job I've ever had. But, and at times you can be a little bit stressed about it and, and, and feel stretched. But I can tell you that I really appreciate the opportunity here at the county. I've really grown as a, uh, not only a lawyer, but just as a professional as well and the experience that I've had here. You know, not everyone gets the opportunity to kind of show their stuff and kind of, and, and to grow as a, as a professional. And I've really done that here, so I really appreciate that opportunity. Thanks to Aaron for having faith and trust in me to carry that out. I had big shoes to fill here when Gordy Swanson left for the, for the bench. And so, um, I really appreciate the opportunity. I'll take with. I'll take with me lots of fond memories of this place and really good tools in my toolbox. So thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Do you want to share with everybody where you're headed?
Yeah. I will be the county coordinator for Pope County, Minnesota. That's Glenwood, Minnesota. It's, if you know where Alexandria is over there, it's directly south of there. It's a, it's a rural county, but I, I'm looking forward to the challenge and looking forward to getting out on the lake a little bit there, so.
It's also a beautiful part of the country and I think close to your roots.
Yep, closer. And, and my wife and I actually met in Alexandria when we were both working there. So it's a little bit of a return for us, so. It's nice, yeah.
We wish you well and Godspeed. Last but not least, we need a motion for an executive session to go into personnel.
That's my motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second to go into exec session for personnel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion unanimously passes. I need about 10 minutes to sign documents, so at 10:00, we'll be back for exec.